Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Would everyone please join us for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent. Before we get started, because last night was our annual elections, we just want to reorganize the board real quick and then we'll get down to the meeting. Okay, I would like to make a motion to have Joe on his chair.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. I would actually like to make a motion for Joe to stay on his vice chair if you're willing.
I'll second that.
General?
Either one.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Jennifer, would you be willing to stay on as secretary?
It's been grueling. That's fine.
I know it's a lot of work.
That's fine.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just a few announcements tonight. Does anybody want me to read all the election details? I mean, there's quite a few. They're all posted. The one thing I do want to say, we're up around 1,200 registered voters in town, and the sad thing is 119 people voted yesterday. So that's a sad, sad thing. So on with the rest of the announcements. The board would like to thank everyone who came out yesterday to vote, and that was it. And hope everybody had a wonderful Easter this past Sunday. And a reminder, town hall offices will be closed April 20th in observance of Patriots' Day. The board's next regular meeting will be held Tuesday, April 21st. Best of luck to anyone running the marathon. The highway surveyor advises that street sweeping will commence on or about April 16th and continue through the end of the following week of April 24th. Reminder, schools are closed for spring vacation during the week of April 20th. Motorists, please take caution on the roadways for children who may be outside. And a reminder, the special annual town meetings are scheduled for Monday, May 11th, beginning at 6:30 at the elementary school. Please mark your calendars. And that's it. Next on the agenda, we have the privilege of having Senator Ryan Fatman, Representative Kevin Curros, and then a wonderful young lady from Blackstone Valley Tech, who's a Millville resident, Ella Diastani. So if Senator Fatman, we have you up. If you both would like to come up.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you very much for having us. I think this is a date that is long overdue. The snow, I think, got in our way a few times, and appreciate your patience. And it's a great honor, I know, for both of us to be here, but for my first time as the state senator for the town of Millville. You can imagine, growing up with the last name Fatman, you get called a few things. Some of the most privileged things I've ever been called in my life are son, brother, husband, and now it's a great honor to be called your state senator. Find it to be something I have to work for every two years very hard, and also find it to be something that I'm stepping in the big shoes for a good man who, you know, and Senator Moore, who's very well respected, and he has mine as well. I'm happy to be here to provide a legislative update just on some of the things that are going on, and I don't want to speak forever, so I can allow Representative Curros to chime in. But, you know, just three things off the top of my mind. I would start with the budget, because I know that you guys are scrutinizing your own budgets at this point, and we've been going through the governors as well. Some of the positive highlights, in my opinion, you know, he increased the Chapter 70 funding by $108 million, increased the UGGA funding, the unrestricted government general aid. Previous to proposing a budget, he had talked about $100 million that was sitting in an account, Chapter 90, that he wanted to release to the cities and towns of Massachusetts. Did that on day two after his inauguration. For the town of Millville, it meant about $51,000, which I think was, especially with all the snow, is something that's much well-needed and appreciated. And also, you know, just recently, we approved a $30 million pothole account fund for trying to fill in some of those potholes on road repairs. So, you know, there are some things, I think, that are happening on the local level that are positives. There are also some things, I think, that have happened that are negative. You know, the governor came in after he was elected. There was an announcement that there was a $768 million shortfall in the budget from the current fiscal year, 2015. One of the things and the items that took it on the chin significantly was the regional transportation funding for regional schools, and I know that that hit BMR pretty hard. One of the things in the budget that I pointed to, I think that we can do a little bit better on, is the DESI funding. That's education, kindergarten grants. A lot of schools in my district relied upon that money, and they're delivered in a different way than Chapter 70, which is a formula. This is in block grants, and so when towns realized that this money was getting cut, it wasn't just based on a formula. It was like a massive amount of money, and for example, the town of Northbridge was like a half a million dollars. So that's a lot of funds. And, I mean, I think as we move forward, at least from the Senate's perspective, I think you can expect those accounts to get a lot of attention, regional transportation funding. And lastly, you know, for me, one of the biggest things I've been looking into was something I learned over the course of my campaign. English language learners, known as EOL students, you know, the state requires that any students who have learned primarily in another language must be educated. And so it's sort of an unfunded mandate where the state funds about 53 cents on the dollar. You know, if it's a mandated service, it's something, if it's good enough to do, I think it should be good enough to fund. And so I've been working with Representative Fernandez from the town of Milford, Representative Curros. We've put together a coalition bipartisan that says, you know, the money should be there for cities and towns to make sure that the kids who come to this country get the education that, you know, the state requires, but also so that the towns who are providing the services don't get left behind financially. And our proposal actually looks at students who enroll after the October 1st deadline, which is when there is no further reimbursement and you have to wait a whole year. That has become very problematic, and I believe, Joe, we had met with Joe maybe a month and a half ago, and I think that there was an influx of about 20 additional EOL students at BMR. And so this is something, you know, that we've seen. That's about a 33% increase. You know, we've seen this throughout the southern Worcester County area, and it's something I'm hoping that we can address legislatively.
And then, just to put a framework around it too, I think everyone is familiar with the special ed circuit breaker and the way that works. The legislation that Senator drafted takes a similar approach to EOL students. So it's essentially an EOL circuit breaker, so that we have an influx, unexpected influx, that you at least have, it softens the landing a little bit, you know, and so we're consciously optimistic that we'll get some traction moving forward on that. Did you want to continue on with any other things?
You know, until someone wants to ask questions, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, just real briefly too, where we stand in the House, this is kind of an interesting year. You know, it's both of our third terms in the legislature, but it's the first term with a new governor. And traditionally, the governor's budget is due like almost immediately after inauguration, because anytime there's a change in administration, they give the governor an additional month to put together their budget, because you can imagine, you know, there's a huge transition going on, plus also just understanding what you have on your hands. And the impact of that, and this is the first time that either of us have been involved with the changing of an administration, is that it kind of compresses the timeframe for everything. You know, the governor's budget only came out a few weeks ago, and now House Ways and Means budget will be coming out the week before vacation, you know, so we'll have the opportunity to review it, submit amendments, and then while we're all out with our families on vacation week, the Ways and Means Committee will be analyzing all the amendments, categorizing them, and getting ready for the budget debate, and will then come back from vacation and start debating the budget in the House. You know, the Senate has a little bit more time, and the luxury that the Senate has is there, I believe, are two additional months of tax receipts, you know, in hand. So when sometimes, when they, you know, get the opportunity to deliberate on their budget, their version of the budget, they've got a little bit more data, and so some things that we have to take a very cautious and conservative approach to, once they've seen how the numbers are coming in, sometimes, you know, they will be able to, you know, increase some accounts that you wouldn't normally have seen increased through the House budget. The other thing I will share is that I believe, year-to-date, don't quote me on the exact number, but I believe we're about $130, $140 million above the consensus revenue numbers to date. So the tax receipts are coming in pretty good, which is a positive thing, you know, for all of us. It means, you know, the economy's doing well, and, you know, recognize that when the consensus revenue numbers are reached, it's intentionally done very conservatively. You know, they don't want to overstretch and then say, oh geez, we have to make cuts before we're even done, you know, preparing our budget. But it is encouraging when the numbers are coming in. You know, we're only a couple of months in, and they're coming ahead of where we thought they would be. So, you know, I think there's light at the end of the tunnel, hopefully, so. Is there anything open for any questions?
Well, one question I have comes from a lot of residents, you know, here and other towns, you know, people, the big discussion is electric bills, you know. National Grid announced back in November, December, that they were going to raise rates around 32%.
Yeah, it actually was significantly more than that.
It seems, well, the school I went to, their sum is more like 100% increase.
Yeah, they went from nine point something to 16 point, whatever it is, 16.7 cents per kilowatt hour, which seems to be a little bit more than 30%. The way they frame that, though, is because there's a couple of different components on your bill, only the supply piece increased by almost 100%.
Right.
Other components did not, so theoretically, the average person would have seen their bill go up by about 37%, but everybody I talked to has gone up significantly more than that.
Yeah.
The rates are not set, the utility companies set the rates on a six-month basis, and that was a six-month window from November through April.
They're just coming down.
Yeah, and the proposed rate has not been finalized yet, but the proposed rate for the six months beginning in May is nine cents and change, nine point something cents. So it'll be significantly lower than, you know, where we've been. But the bulk of the reason for the increase, natural gas prices continue to go up, and as we've taken, you know, more, you know, traditional power plants offline, oil or coal based, even clean coal, you know, we're not really doing much there, it puts more pressure on the natural gas supply. And so that was the single biggest, you know, contributor to that huge rate spike.
Can I ask you a question? Your board put a cap on it, so they can only raise it so much? I mean, they can do whatever they want.
So it's actually, just to step back for one quick second, this last, as Sleckman Dean was saying, was that, you know, this ends in May, but it was put forward, you know, back in November as a temporary increase, and the reason why I'm bringing this up is typically, when you do a rate increase through the Department of Public Utility, there has to be a public hearing, but this kind of flew under the radar, and the reason is seasonal rate increases do not require by statute a public hearing. And so that's actually one of the things we'd like to try to change, to bring more scrutiny to it, because when there is scrutiny, a lot of times, the utility companies will step back.
They don't want the news.
Exactly. The other thing, though, that's really important is that the rates are really decided by the actual source of energy. You know, the utility is almost like the middleman purchasing the energy from the power companies. And so the power companies have seen their prices increase dramatically. Part of that is demand, but most of it is supply, and that's what Representative Curros was getting at. We've had a very big problem in our Commonwealth for the last, you know, 10, decade, and that was a policy choice not to really expand our natural gas pipelines. And there are several things that need to be done and that are starting to happen. We've put a lot of money and investment into alternative energies, and that's really good. You know, from a long-term perspective, solar energy, the return on investment there is getting better and better as the technology gets better, as years pass. Wind energy, not so much, I mean, especially offshore wind. We've done a lot of mandates where we require power companies to purchase power from offshore wind companies. That is about 28 to 35 cents per kilowatt hour when not subsidized by the government. So that's really expensive.
But a lot of these power companies, I know this for a fact, buy their gas in bulk because they know what they're going to spend on total peak hours. So they buy their gas in bulk at a flat rate, and they, and their rate doesn't go up, but they raise our rate up. So they make an enormous amount of money. What I'm saying is, I think it needs to be looked at, and if these guys are going to buy their rate of gas through the pipeline at so many cubic feet at a flat rate because they're buying it in bulk, then there should be something said about the homeowner's rate going up and down. There should be a happy meeting there, because these guys are making an enormous amount of money.
They deal a lot also in futures, though, for example. They're already buying energy on the market that will be delivered like 12 to 18 months from now. And it's a highly speculative thing. When you look under the covers of what's going on in the utility industry, I don't know how anybody can accurately price what energy should cost. It is such an incredibly complex thing. So you've got futures involved, you've got energy futures, you've got raw material futures, those types of things, and it's just incredibly complex, you know, and the one thing, as the Senator said, that we need to do is make sure we increase transparency, that people can say, listen, here's what a near 100% increase means to my family, to my business, whatever. You know, the one thing, you know, that we hear whenever we go to things like Chamber of Commerce events, is, you know, the high price of energy in Massachusetts is an inhibitor to business growth.
Yeah.
You know, people are invested in other states because our energy is more expensive than right across the border in many cases. So it's a problem. I think, I think the administration is keenly focused on it, and, you know, I don't know that there's a silver bullet, you can wave a magic wand and solve the problem, but I think you do a lot of little things to lessen, you know, the impact on things.
Yeah.
On a related note, actually, I was at a session just last week at the State House on solar energy, and I understand you've got some fun agenda tonight to talk about solar. And the concept of solar energy is net metering, which says, any electricity you generate that you don't need, you then sell back to the utility company, so you're netting that out in effect. Well, when this whole industry sprang up, they put finite caps on the amount of net metering that could go on, because if you think about, the utility companies invest billions of dollars on their infrastructure, and if the rug were just to be pulled off underneath them all at once, it would be unfair to them. So a cap was put in place that says, you know, you can only sell so much, or force so much solar or wind or hydro into the grid, and then beyond that, that they don't have to buy it. And since they don't have to buy it, they won't buy it. Okay? Well, we're right at that cap in, for national grid, national grid. And star, I think there's still some room. But the session I was at last week was talking about, we need to raise that cap to allow, you know, further solar products to move forward. Otherwise, at least in national grid part of the state, they're going to be throttled right now, because we're bumping right up against that cap. So I know that there's a lot of momentum there, and I think something will happen very quickly, probably right after the budget debate on that. I would not be surprised if it was one of the first bills, because literally, there are, you know, arrays being built right now that they won't be able to turn on, or if they turn them on, you know, the host can take advantage of it, but any extra electricity, they won't be able to do anything with it, because national grid will not have to buy it.
Is the aggregation movement moving along in terms of, I think we have an application with the DPU to bring in the Hampshire Council of Governments, make that available to our residents. And all they do is just negotiate for good rates collectively, and basically waiting on the DPW to approve.
DOE.
DOE.
So that's fault purchasing of energy for the town.
They were doing our application.
That's another interesting thing, is Kevin and I have talked about Veridian as an alternative to some of these utility companies, and one of the things I was just reading on my way over here is now they have these excessive charges, they call retroactive billing. And so when you switch out of a utility company because you don't like their price, they actually are billing you for doing that, and so you don't see really that much savings. It's something that's coming under an incredible amount of scrutiny right now.
Essentially, what happens is whenever...
That's the question. You know, that's, there's a lot of controversy, and I would say that that's really not right.
Right, because what happens essentially is, when they quote you a, they set their rate at whatever it was, 16 cents, okay, for six months, okay? What they're actually buying their energy at might be eight cents for one month, 10 cents the next month, 22 cents, 24 cents, 16 cents, or whatever. And so, but they average it out, and they say, it will be 16.5 cents for the next six months, okay? Well, if you opt out after they've already spent the, bought the expensive energy and sold it to you at a rate lower than what they paid for, okay, and then you've got a couple of months of cheap energy that, you know, as far as they're concerned, they're allowed to bill you to make up their difference there. That also works in the opposite, like some people, depending on where you are in the cycle, whenever you change your energy provider, some people will get a credit as well, because if you happen to be in a part of the cycle where they bought energy very cheaply, less than what they're selling it to you for, then they have to give you a credit as well. So it does average out, but some people get surprises, though.
But that's why transparency is so important in this whole process, because people shouldn't be saddled with that kind of surprise. And the last thing I'll say about this, which I find to be fascinating, and it's where we're going, is we all know of our smartphones and how technology is improving, you know, they're starting now to talk about smart, you know, washers, dryers, and what that means is they would actually tell you if, you know, you do your laundry at 6 o'clock, well, it's going to cost you a total of $5, you know? And if you do that, you know, every week, you're looking at a bill of $250, you know, dollars a year, but if you do it at 8 o'clock, you'll actually save money because it costs $1. And so you can see a savings of about $200 over the course of the year. You know, that's, that's, that's the way that, you know, technology is going to help us drive some of these costs down.
Anything else that folks need to talk about?
A little help with this building? That grant we asked you to look into?
Yeah.
Any progress there?
I think we're still trying to get affirmation on that from the administration. You know, I mean, there are a whole lot of things that were kind of works in progress with the administration change, but still trying to get their arms around, so, yeah, we'll keep you posted on that.
We appreciate that.
Throw a little extra in the budget for Millville.
Give it a shot.
Anyway, all right, great, excellent. Thank you very much, both, for coming up. And so you guys are on the next part of this agenda.
Should we stay, or should we sit back down?
Yeah, you can stay there. And Ellen, we'd like to invite you up to the podium.
Can we sit for this?
Yeah, please. So Ella Diastani was awarded, did fabulous with Skills USA at Valley Tech, so she also won some awards that through, that I would like her to speak on. I know she wants to speak, so I don't want to take all the air out of her balloon, and then, and then we'll, we'll do our speeches after, after you.
Thank you. I would like to begin by saying what an honor it truly is to stand in front of you all tonight and talk about being one of Massachusetts' top youth volunteers for 2015. However, as I continue, I would like to note that although recognition for my acts of service is greatly appreciated, my motive to help my community is not for the fancy awards or for amazing gatherings like this, but rather I volunteer to make a difference in this world. If I want to see a change, I must first be the change, and what better way than to serve my community, help others in need, and learn valuable lessons that far outreach could ever be taught in an academic or vocational setting. In 2011, I attended Blackstone Valley Tech, and since then, I have embraced the health services program, working diligently and endlessly to prepare myself for an even more demanding future. Throughout the process, I became inspired to perform at a higher standard to achieve my underlying goal of becoming a pediatric general surgeon. I wish I could tell you that I wrote this speech three weeks ago when I was asked to join you all tonight, but I waited until last night, not to be a queen of procrastination, but rather to wait for a spark of inspiration. I didn't, I wanted to make sure I didn't deliver the speech with a long list of service acts. I wanted to uplift and fulfill your hearts with the passion I have to volunteer. Yesterday, I had my spark of inspiration. At 8:30 a.m., our entire school was called to an assembly to learn and celebrate the life of Rachel Scott. For those of you who do not know her story, Rachel Scott was a young lady whose life was taken in one of the nation's worst high school shootings. Although the story of the Columbine shooting was heartbreaking, the celebration of Rachel's life was beautiful. Rachel lived her life with so much love and compassion for others. She took every opportunity to make, to make everyone feel accepted. Her simple acts of kindness is what makes her story so special, making those remember her not for sorrow, but for the challenge, but with the challenge to do good to others, even if they cannot do the same for you. This is the way I want to be remembered. In years to come, it will not matter the brand of clothes you wear, the types of shoes you have, or how big the house you live in is. What will matter is the way you treated others as you walk through the highs and lows of life. As I begin to tell you what I have devoted my life to for the past four years, I want to keep in mind the stories, I want you to keep in mind the stories that I begin to share with you, and not the hours that I've dedicated. For the past four years, I've been a class officer for the class of 2015. From my freshman to junior year, I was historian, and my senior year, I became vice president. I have worked hard with my peers to fundraise for our school and plan activities that our entire class would enjoy. From this service activity, I've learned to listen to the voice of others and accommodate for all, which is very hard to do sometimes. In my future, I wish to use this skill I have obtained to embrace change and value all opinions and concerns. From sophomore to senior year, I've been honored to serve, to serve on my Students' Council's executive board. For the past four turkey runs and holiday drives, I have learned the true value of giving. For 18 years of my life, I've paid little attention to the wholesome meals and what seemed to be a simple can of peas, but to the families that we have provided Thanksgiving dinners to, it means the world to them. I have learned to be more appreciative of what I have and be blessed that I am able to have a wholesome dinner every night, and not just on Thanksgiving. In my sophomore and junior year, I became a part of Skills USA Community Service Team, spending over 1,500 hours towards two major projects that have greatly influenced my life. In 2012 to 2013, I, along with two other teammates, created a project called KISS, Keeping Immune Systems Strong. We are able to influence our school community about the importance of healthy living. At our state competition, we placed gold, and at Nationals, we came in 14th out of 42 teams across the nation. With the passion to place top three, I decided to take on the team again from 2013 to 2014. This time, my teammates Michaela, Sam, and myself came up with the project idea of being Smarties, which acronym stands for Social Media Acting Responsibly with Technology in Every Situation. With the increasing rate of technological advances, we thought it would only be appropriate to educate our school and community about self-respect and being cautious of what we post online. As a part of our presentation to over 4,000 students, we not only include... As a part of our presentation to over four thousand students, we not only included using social media to display a positive self-image, but we also tied in how it could influence future employment opportunities. At the state competition, we placed gold and were able to advance to Nationals in Kansas, Missouri, where we came in second and placed silver. It was by far the greatest achievement I had ever made, and this year I decided to retire from the team, and I put my strong faith into this year's team to come home with gold, and even if it does not turn out this way, they will always be golden in my eyes as they completely and altruistically devote themselves to the service of others. During my junior and senior year of high school, I decided to volunteer at Milford Regional Medical Center. Every Friday afternoon, I would spend time making IV kits, driving around the hospitality cart, or even dressing up as Disney's famous character Olaf from, for Halloween. Lastly, I am the president of my N H, National Honor Society and National Technical Honor Societies of my school. I've decided to influence my peers, peers my age and younger, to carry the same passion for volunteering. I would say that at least fifty percent of our society, society does more than the expected number of hours per trimester. However, it is my hope that at the end of the day, they do not volunteer, volunteered to stay on the society or meet any qualifications, but rather volunteered to become a better person and realize the power that service has to others. Above all, I would like to thank my instructors and administration from B V T, who nominated me for the Prudential Spirit of Community Award. Their endless devotion to my education is something I'll be forever blessed for. I would also like to thank all of you for inviting me here tonight. Your support means everything and helps me realize what I, why I do what I do. And to those who mean the most to me, my family, thank you for each day which is full of laughter and love and for the infinite faith you have in me and my future. Thank you.
Great, um, next Senator Fatman, if you'd like.
You know, we have a-
Stay right there, Ella.
Citation, uh, for Ella, on behalf of both the State Senate and the State House. Just very briefly, I will say that when I see young people achieving wonderful things and giving back to their community, it is always uplifting. When I was in the sixth grade, I had a principal. I ran the class president, and I didn't run with the idea of giving away candy bars to all the kids or ice cream at lunch, but to bring a crosswalk from one side of the road to the other to help kids cross it from a church where people would park. And that principal said, go to the school committee and talk to them. And it taught me a great lesson because after a year, we got that crosswalk there. And as a sixth grader, you can easily be dismissed as, oh, you know, you're too young and you can't make a difference. Uh, but proof, evidence right here, you know, young people can make a difference and social media is definitely going to, um, make a big difference both positively and negatively in people's lives, you know, for years to come. And being respectful and appropriate is always a good thing to see young people trying to make sure is achieving. But we have this citation, uh, from the Senate. Be it known to all that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Ella in receiving Prudential Spirit of Community Award. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends very best wishes for continued success in all endeavors. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I had the opportunity to talk to Ella a little bit, uh, before the meeting started, and, um, asked about a project, and you was talking about the social media aspect. And, you know, in, when you're in the public eye, uh, social media is very important to the Senator's job, to my job. It's one of the ways we keep constituents, uh, in the loop as to what's going on, uh, announcing these like office hours, you know, policy stances, where we stand on things, those types of things. But sometimes honestly, we will post things just to foster some healthy debate, both sides, as, as you indicated. Um, and, and understanding that you need to respect different opinions, even if you don't necessarily agree with them. And, uh, and I know the Senator will do it and I'll do it occasionally as well. I'll post something marginally controversial just to, to hear where people are falling in, because sometimes what you'll, you'll hear and see in social media, brings forth a perspective I thought, you know, um, so, so I think hats off to you. The other thing that I think everyone needs to understand about social media is you kind of sort of can't undo it once it's been done. You know, and, uh, all of us who are in, in the public eye have probably posted a thing or two that we've done, geez, you know, in retrospect, maybe that wasn't the best thing to do. But what's interesting is, uh, right now in the legislature, there are a number of bills going through the legislature right now to increase privacy for minors. Because recognizing that, um, you know, kids don't always make, make the best choices, but it shouldn't necessarily have a lasting impact on your life in case you did something silly as a kid. We all have done silly things as kids. So there are actually a couple of bills going through, uh, the, the legislature right now that will increase, uh, the privacy allowed to kids. For example, uh, you can set your Facebook social, uh, or privacy settings pretty high that no one, you know, that, you know, apparently, you know, that nobody else can see it. However, we've heard of instances where schools, uh, or employers, when trying to either hire or admit you, ask for your Facebook password as a condition of acceptance or employment. So they can then look at your Facebook posts and see what you've done out there, that type of thing. You know, th- there's a school of thoughts that says that's invasion of privacy, uh, you know, even though with social media, you've set it, uh, at a high level to say, I, I wanna be private. And so th- these are big issues, and, and, and I, I compliment you for tackling it head on, uh, because it's the world we live in. You know, and it's vastly different than, than when I was growing up, you know, and, and, and it's just raising awareness, uh, is so important. So I really do appreciate you, you, you making that effort there, so. With no further ado, I present a citation from the House of Representatives. Uh, be hereby known to all that Ella, uh, is, is, uh, being recognized for placing as a distinguished finalist for the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards given, uh, the seventh day of April, two thousand fifteen, signed by Speaker of the House Robert Pompeo, and authored by myself. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
There's two more. On, on behalf of the board of selectmen and, um, you know, all residents in Millville, very proud of you for your achievements and, and thank you for, for taking a step forward at such, such a young age to try and make a difference for the future children and. So, uh, uh, certificate of commendation, Town and Millville Board of Selectmen hereby presents Ella Diastani with this commendation, acknowledging your achievements and contributions to community service, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I just have one note, uh, from Jerry Finn to read to you, um, the B V T School Committee Chairman, um, and a Millville member. Uh, he could not be present tonight because they had a meeting at the school. So let me just read that, and, uh, and they do, but B V T does apologize for not being able to come. Glasses. Some fifty years ago this year, Millville and twelve other communities had a vision of, of forging together a different type of education that offered academic achievement, vocational, technical rigor to the citizen, the citizenry in the pursuit of a better life. As we fast forward through, through those fifty years, Ella Diastani presents the very best of that initial vision. On behalf of Dr. Fitzpatrick, the school committee, and all the teachers and professional staff at Blackstone Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School, we are very, very proud of Ella's recent accomplishments. We mention recent because her parents and, be- because her parents, and we expect continued achievements as the, as, as she advances in her career. Ella has sent, set the bar very high, only, not only with her Prudential Spirit Community Award, but also for her National Silver Medal Award in Kansas City at the Skills USA Competition against five thousand of the nation's very best vocational technical students. Ella has, has done Millville and her parents proud. We would also like to acknowledge and thank the legislative efforts of both Senator Fatman, Representative Carls, for their continued support of education in gen- in general, and B V T in particular. In fact, Dr. Fitzpatrick and I just rece- received official notification that a state approval of our chap- chapter seventy-four petition for the newly created, cre- created Engineering Career Pathway Program at B V T. This will bring the number of chapter seventy-four state-approved vocational technical programs offered at B V T to eighteen. Our sincere thank you to all the career givers who support our students, and in particular, thank you to Ella for showing us the way and for setting an even higher bar for the future Millville students to achieve. Congratulations and thank you for your efforts, Gerald Finn, Vice Chairman, B V T School Committee and Millville Member. So, and you have a copy of this letter in that, in your citation, so congratulations.
Thank you.
We're just gonna take a couple of minutes off just so we can do a few pictures for Ella.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ella.
Thank you.
Best of luck to you following. Congratulations.
I can't, I can't read it. He's gonna be on the other list. Okay. Resume to-
Thank you.
Uh, approval of minutes and warrants. Uh, we have minutes from March sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, at six P M. All were present with the exception of Mr. Laura.
Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of March sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, at six P M.
All in favor? Aye. Next, we have the minutes from March sixteenth at seven P M. And everybody was present for that meeting. All in favor?
Aye. Um, before we make the motion on the March twenty-third one?
Yep.
Cause it did include the warrant. There was a couple of times, and I don't know, um, a lot of times we have a discussion, and then it, then there's an, a question at the end of it. So I'm not sure if the question is actually something that was brought up. If it was a discussion? No, because then it goes into our motion, but it does it quite, it does it a couple of times, and I just, I don't know if it's because it's a warrant. You know, it says, you know, does the board support funding the stabilization, and then that, the motion is there, which is fine. But there was a couple of others like, um, the Assistant Town Clerk and the town training, and the, it says what are the board's feelings, and then it just has the motion, so I don't know if that's-
Yeah, ultimately that would be a question that I posed to you, and then ultimately, your motion was your decision.
Okay. Cause that one of it says feelings, and I'm like, well, I made the motion, that's not necessarily, you know, I, I have varying levels of feelings. But I, you know what I mean, it's, it's, I just, I was reading, it just kind of struck me as a, a question in the middle of a, you know, at the end of a discussion. I think, I don't know, I just, sometimes what I vote on isn't truly, what I might feel personally, but I think it's the best for the town. You know, so, so it says feelings, it, I don't want that to be like, all just inclusive of what I, you know, there, there's layers to it, and there's discussion that goes around. So I just saw that, it's the first time I've really seen it, maybe because it was repetitive, because we had the same discussion for each one. It just kind of threw me off. So I just wasn't sure if, you know.
I can certainly take those out.
I would take it out. There's confusion. Tell me, Jennifer, I can understand why she's asking because the way it's put in, I, I say if you take it out, then I can split it up in the future.
It couldn't be asked, you know, yeah, Helen Coffin asked, what's the board's, you know, final decision, or, you know, what, or, there was one, which was, it seemed an appropriate question, like something about solar panels, I think it was in the last one, when we were meeting with Lisa. Because it was part of discussion. Yeah, um, can the board start auctioning off some properties or assign signs for use for solar panels? But that was part of our discussion. So I don't know, I, I don't know, the feeling kind of threw me.
I can't remember, I have just throwing it out there.
That was the only thing, and I think it's just because of the format-
Yep.
Of the warrant, it just caught me. It wasn't just one question, it was like four in a row, and I was like, oh. So, okay. So with that, I make a motion to, um, approve with those amended, amended redactance statements.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, approval of warrant? Take your time.
So, you know, I do have warrants this evening. I left them on the secretary's desk, so I can get those at the end.
Okay. Alright, uh, reports of town officials, we have none scheduled for this evening. First public forum? Correspondence? I had none myself tonight. No, I just gotta, I'm gonna speak.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, one, um, one piece of correspondence that does fire your attention is the, um, the letter from Mass D O T.
Yep, sorry about that.
Yep, that's okay, um, this includes, um, this is for the fifteen thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars of the additional winter road, um, uh, road assistance funding.
Yep.
Um, and I would just need a motion from the board to authorize, uh, you as chair to sign this state contract for that.
I think the board should have the chair signs, contract for D O T.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we had, um, appointments and resignations. We have two resignations on the police and one appointment for veterans agent. We have, um, I would like to, Dear Chief Landry, I would like to start by thanking you for giving me the opportunity to work in the Town of Millville Police Department. I have come to truly like Millville citizens and fellow employees. It is with a heavy heart that due to personal reasons, I am forced to resign from the Millville Police Department. I again would like to thank you for the, for the training and opportunities you have provided me. Sincerely, James V. Brown. So with, uh, with, with great regret, we, Millville would, uh, look for a motion for that.
Motion to accept the resignation, James V. Brown.
And we want to thank Officer Brown for his services. Next, we have to Chief Ronald Landry. I, Officer Gregory W. Tappan, uh, part-time officer for the Millville Police Department, and giving my complete and full resignation effective today, Saturday, March twenty-first. As stated, my resignation is effective immediately. I am resigning to focus solely on the completion of the full ti- full-time police academy that I am currently attending. My life and career goal is to graduate the police academy and become a full-time police officer. I, I, all, all issued gear will be given, uh, in hand to Sergeant William Coop Junior, no later than twenty-three- no later than twenty-three hundred on today's date. Uh, the, the issued gear is to include, and he lists off all his gear. Uh, so, uh, Millville, Town of Millville, uh, wishes Officer Tappan the best of luck, you know, with his career and education, and hopefully someday he'll be back here as a full-time police officer. So, uh, I would look for a motion to accept...
Motion to approve, uh, the resignation of, uh, Officer Gregory W. Tappan.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, next, we have a appointment for the Veterans Agent. Uh, look for a motion, um, vote to appoint Lincoln Barber as Vet- Veterans Agent, effective May first, two thousand fifteen, through April thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
So...
Yes, sir. Any discussion?
Nope.
Nope, that's it. All in favor?
Aye.
You looked like you were gonna say something, John. You had that look in your eyes. You said second, and then I was waiting for something else to come out. Okay, great. All right, thank you, Mr. Barber. And Executive Secretary's report.
Um, just a quick, uh, few items, uh, the Town Council RFP has been sent out. Uh, the deadline for returns is April sixteenth. So, I will compile those, and I will have them for your review at your meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-first. And at that meeting, what I'll be asking for you to do is to review and rank them, and determine the top, uh, two or three that you'd like to call back to interview. Um, Chief Landry's performance evaluation, I'm still waiting on two. Um, I've had three returned to me, um...
I have mine.
Okay.
With me.
So, that was my next question was, how much longer would you like me to wait? Would you like me to just use the information I have, or, um, do you have those with you this evening?
Yeah.
Okay. So, once I have that, would you like me to go ahead and finalize it with the four that I have?
Yeah, we're fine. Is that okay, Chief?
That's fair.
We only have, well, I have only four of them.
I'll try to.
All right, let me add to that while we're on review. I'm waiting for one more from, uh, for Helen. We know who we are. Well, the four I have are sitting here.
What, I turned mine into you last week.
Yeah, that's what I said, the four I have are sitting here.
Oh, okay. I was like, usually, usually I am the last one, I know that.
I didn't, I didn't, and I, I know Barb got pulled away.
Yeah.
You know, unexpectedly, so...
Um, I think, um, in my conversations with Selectman Reposa, we are, um, pretty good to go with the annual report. Um, we've pretty much finalized it, and we're just missing one department. Um, so, Mr. Reposa... Uh, that's the Highway Department.
He's the only...
Department that did not, um, turn in a report. I would like to get that out by the end of this week without fail. That does have to get to the printer who wanna have those, you know, for the town meeting, so... Uh, Mr. Reposa did find a few small things that I adjusted, and unless there's anything else, um, I think it's good to go.
Now, this administrative person that we're gonna take on providing town meeting approves, the, um, that's gonna aid in these, uh, like, say, Highway Department annual report. Okay.
I, uh, I must comment on, on the report, the way it was compiled. It's a pretty extensive and comprehensive reporter. Uh, it's a good picture of what happened in this town. And, uh, so, fifteen years from now, and someone reads it, they say, you know, they'll do what we're saying now.
We'll be in the history books.
We'll be in the history books. But no, I, I congratulate Helen and her staff for, um, compiling all of that.
Um, just to let the board know, uh, we came in yesterday again to no heat in this building. Um, the technicians were called in, they replaced, um, they found out what the issue was. They came in today to replace the part, and then found another issue, uh, which is the expansion tank. Um, they are coming back in the morning to perform a test, um, on the pressure. Um, they told me that there's a possibility they may be able to repair the bladder of the existing tank, rather than have to purchase a new one. Um, but I will tell you, if it's determined that we do need a new tank, uh, the cost of that is over three thousand dollars, for just the tank, not including the labor, so... Um, we're hoping that the test in the morning comes back, that they can somehow repair, repair the bladder.
Here's a forty-gallon tank.
It's a forty-gallon tank. Um, and if, with that having been said, if we do need the new tank, I will need to, um, seek a reserve on transfer from the Finance Committee, cause I don't have enough in my budget to cover that, so... Um, just to let you know, the snow and ice deficit, um, after this past voucher cycle is at one hundred eighty thousand three hundred ninety dollars. Um, and that's the deficit
Budget.
on top of the sixty.
Oh, that's okay.
On top of the sixty, yeah. Um, and we do have, uh, the Highway Surveyor did mention he's waiting on one additional invoice, so...
That's higher than the four, one four years ago.
Yeah, just about, I think just about the same. I think the deficit was about one eighty. About the year as well.
Oh, okay, well...
So, that's just F Y I. Um, the auditors were here for, um, at least a week, week and a half. They finished up yesterday, um, and they will be submitting their final report in May. Um, they didn't seem to have any big issues. Um, they were, in my experience, the most thorough. This was the most thorough year, um, since I've been here. They pulled out contracts, employment agreements, uh, procurement files, they looked at everything. So, it was, it was actually good though, I'm glad they did all that, so... Um, but we'll have their final report in May. Um, the classroom on the second floor, we have locked the doors, even though we had the, um, crime scene tape, because that was all that was available. People were continuing to go in there, and I was coming in to find the door was propped open. Um, so I finally had to put padlocks on those doors, so that nobody goes in there. Although we did have some structural repairs made, they're only temporary. And the way that room was left, it really shouldn't be used. Um, I think for, as a safety precaution, we should probably stay out of there unless we really have to go in there for something. Um, so, the keys, um, for those doors are being held by the custodial staff, myself, and the, um, fire, and police will have them in the Knox box as well. Um, and I have prepared signs that will be put on the doors explaining the situation with that room. Um, and the last thing is just a reminder, um, that at six o'clock, before your next meeting on the twenty-first, you're meeting with the Finance Committee to go over the warrants, the final warrant articles, because you will at your next meeting, uh, need to sign the warrants. So, that's at six o'clock. And that's it.
Excellent. Uh, anybody have any old business that's not posted?
I do not.
Next, new business, special town meeting, Ian, the annual town meeting warrant.
Yep, um, you should have a packet that was paper clipped.
Yep.
Um, that says, starts with Article seven. What this is, is since the board voted, uh, at the meeting, the second meeting in March, to close the warrant, there have been three, um, articles recommended and or submitted, um, to be included on the warrant. Uh, one is for the reallocation of M S B A funds, um, and this was something, um, that was actually voted on by the Capital Committee, and, um, I will change that, that should say Capital Committee. Um, and that was because their meeting took place after the warrants were closed. Uh, the second is an amendment to the Personnel Bylaw, the Classification and Compensation Plan with respect to the state's minimum wage laws. And I do have backup attached to this for your review.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I sent Town Council, um, a simple question, asking him if, um, what I had always been told is in fact correct, that the town only has to follow the federal, uh, minimum wage rate. And in a lengthy opinion, three pages later, um, his recommendation is that we, um, should probably comply with the state's minimum wage rate, just to be on the safe side, I guess for lack of a better way of saying it. There seems to be some conflicting, uh, opinions within the legal community. Um, the Attorney General's Office thinks differently than the Mass General Law, Chapter one fifty-one. Um, so, there's a lot of legality there. Um, so, I've prepared an article that will increase the minimum from eight fifty to nine, and then for next year, from nine to ten. And then the last one is a zoning bylaw amendment, which is being recommended by the Planning Board. And this relates to, um, the overlay district and the ability for individuals to have solar farms on certain parcels of land. Uh, the way the bylaws read, it was limited to, um, pretty much the landfill, the town-owned landfill. Um, so what they've done is they've added, um, additional parcels, um, that are off of Main Street that head towards Blackstone.
My question on that is, how, how did they come to that conclusion of those ones versus other people? You know what I mean, who owns these lots, first of all?
That I am not familiar with.
Are they private lots, are they town-owned lots, are they, I mean, cause maybe there's someone else in town who wants to be considered on this?
My understanding is there was, um, an application with the Building Commissioner, um, from a private citizen, looking to put a solar farm on his property.
Okay.
And that is how this all originated and came about. And I'm not sure if there is a gentleman in the audience who might be able to speak to it.
Would you like to come up?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, we have, uh, Greg Carey with us tonight.
Yes, and I have, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
I'm a community solar manager with Clean Energy Collective, and I've brought a letter of introduction. Um, we are, uh, our, our company develops community solar, uh, projects. We're based in Worcester, and, um, we build ground-mounted solar projects. Uh, the difference, uh, in, in what we develop and what you've seen in other parts of the state is that we sell, uh, fifty percent, at least fifty percent of the power that we generate from our con- community solar projects are sold to residential customers. Most of the large-scale projects are sold to commercial customers, or municipalities, or large nonprofits, or e- even the state and local government. Um, so, uh, we are very interested, we've built, uh, two community solar projects, one in Hadley, one in Rehoboth. We have another dozen that are in the permitting, uh, stages right now. Um, they've been very well received. Um, we just recently received our permits in the town of Sutton, which isn't too far from here, and in Uxbridge. And, uh, we would very much like to build a project, um, in Millville. It's my understanding that the only way we could get a project permitted in this town is if we're in the overlay district. So, we have an agreement with the property owner at, uh, one fifty-eight, uh, Lincoln Street,
Hmm.
uh, three parcels, uh, to lease three parcels from him. And if, um, if this is allowed, if it's put, if these parcels are included in the overlay district, we would then be able to go to the Planning Board and submit an application, and, and have public hearings, and go through the permitting process with the Planning Board.
Okay. So, this basically would be a leasing agreement?
It would be a ground lease, yes, with the property owner, that's correct.
For twenty years?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay.
So, my, my question is, if this didn't go through, would you still go through the Planning Board for a special application, a special permit, a Z B A, zoning board, appeals? I, I don't understand, this is the first time, it's before, so I just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. So, if, do we have an application process in place right now? So, if someone's somewhere else, they have to come and then get their property put in it? Or is this on the cusp of that area?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, my understanding, our, our engineer is, um, is Norm Gamache, you may know from period at Halman. Uh, Norm informed me that the, uh, that the only permitting path for a project like this is through the overlay district. That if you're not, if these parcels are not included in the overlay district, then, um, you can't get permit.
Okay.
The way the bylaw is currently constructed.
All right.
Okay.
And the, the Planning Board submitted this?
Yes.
So, they've had lengthy discussions and topics and questions surrounding this, I assume, okay.
Yep.
And they will have to hold a public hearing.
There will be a public hearing?
And basically, uh, the majority of your production is doing, going to residents?
Right, we have a program, it's called Solar Perks, and we market, uh, at least fifty percent, if not more, of the power to residential customers. And the program, uh, allows, um, home, not only homeowners, but renters, condominium owners, who either can't put solar on their roof, or can't afford to put it, cause it is still very expensive. Uh, it allows them to buy power from our community solar project with no money down, and get a small discount every month on their electric bill.
Okay.
So...
As long as you're, we're in the N-grid territory here, so, uh, it would be marketed to N-grid customers in Millville.
Um, the property that it's, I'm, I'm trying to think of where it is, I'm thinking odd evens. So, we're looking after Fair Street, but before the junkyard on the right-hand side.
It's right...
So, is it the Burns property?
It's, uh, Mr. Polney owns the property.
Okay.
And it's right on the, it's right on the town...
Well, I mean, there's Burns, and then there's Polney, so, I was hoping it was Burns, so, cause I think that would make it easier. Okay, all right.
I just have a question you wanted to ask him. How's that generally taxed?
I'm sorry?
How's that generally taxed, a property such as that?
Uh, once, once the, uh, project is built, the, the assessors normally, um, in other towns, for example, at Sutton, uh, there's normally a, a pilot agreement between the developer and the town for payment, rule of taxes, uh, where the assessors basically come up with a value and a tax rate based on the revenue stream that a property generates over a period of time.
So, that would look at commercial tax rate, so that would be, have to be looked at as well?
Yeah, it would be whatever the assessors determine is fair market.
It's considered a permanent fixture. You'd be pulling concrete footings and stuff like that in there, right?
Well, the, uh, the, the drilled, but they're permanent, yeah, it's permanent.
Is there a tax base on that, does that, I mean?
That's under discussion.
Yeah.
Well, I know the electrical put-in permit fees for that per panel, didn't we discuss that a couple of years ago?
Hmm.
We did do that a couple of years ago, cause I remember Charlie was here for that.
Yeah, per, uh, X amount of dollars per, uh...
Whatever, yeah.
I forgot, uh, how many watts?
My, my understanding, if you're gonna do a ground-based system and sell it to residents, it has to be contiguous. In other words, a butters to that facility.
No, it can be anyone in the, anyone in the town, anyone theoretically in the N-grid, uh, service territory.
So...
Yeah.
So, it could, it's gonna be available to all residents in Millville.
Rich, you have a question?
I, I do, um, I, I have no idea what these parcels are, but I have a question, um, it, it sounds like the town is making them a combination for a private enterprise. And my question would be right off the bat, is at these proposed locations, um, I would think any back taxes that are due, the town of Millville, should be paid in full before any type of permit is granted, um, to the...
Rich, that, and that's what I was, that's, cause I know that the property on that side, there's only two owners, from Fair Street up. There's only two owners, at least, almost.
That's how by law, so...
Yeah, um, but, and I just pulled out, we met with Lisa last week, so, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm trying to look at the
It's on here.
twenty-two sixteen. So, what it is, is the, the parcel... So what it is, is the parcels that are listed is not the parcel that is owed taxes. Though he does owe taxes on the parcel, you know, 122-6...
Okay.
-16. But the ones that are in here are not those ones.
This particular parcel?
But I'm hoping, maybe with the extra income of leasing, that he will be able to pay the parcel of 122-16.
Yeah.
So, I know that's not, you know, you're just, you're just the guy.
I don't know what is.
And I, I don't mean to put it out here. And I, I, I like John, so, but I also have to think of the town. I, I don't think there's much we can do, because the parcel that's owed isn't the parcel listed. If the Planning Board has put this, I mean, if that parcel was listed, I seriously question it. But if we don't have a bylaw that says, I mean, to sign off a permit, he's, you're going to still have to take out like a building permit, electrical permit...
Yeah, we have to go through the entire Planning Board process.
Through everyone.
My only problem with all towns, and this is one of my biggest pieces, they're an eyesore.
Yeah, they're better than one.
Big time, eyesore. I see one on 146, then eyesore. Especially if you get the sun, they flare and this and that. I'll tell you, we ought to put some kind of restriction.
But I think that's when, it goes before the Planning Board and it goes before the public hearing, is that's when you address those things. I mean, we can have our own opinions, but I, I don't know if we can technically stop this.
I'm just saying, I'm not saying stop it.
Yeah, I don't mean to stop.
The one and up, then they have a whole row of tab providers across it, so...
Yeah, in Sutton, I just finished permitting the project. We were required to present a landscaping plan, so there's not only fencing, but there's landscaping in front of the fencing.
Right, because that property, you'll be able to see from an old historic farm.
Maybe. Maybe three months of the year.
Right. Well, no, I know, because right now I can see the property where it's going to be. But, no, you're right. When the veg, you know, when all the leaves grow in and whatever.
Eight months out of the year.
Yeah. But then it'll be all snows.
Technically, that's an ideal site, that's south sloping.
South-facing, yeah.
I don't, I mean, if the plan, I, I respect the Planning Board, and they know what they're doing, and Joe knows what they're doing, and it's on here, and they believe it's, you know. And I have to think of it as leasing the land brings extra income to the individual who is currently on a payment plan for another parcel. So hopefully, you know what I mean, we'll get our money sooner than later.
Right.
So that would be nice.
Is there any eventuality?
Great, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Any eventuality of selling it back to National Grid?
No, typically, we, typically when we sell to residential customers, that gets, that is subscribed very quickly. But there may be an opportunity at some point for us to talk with the town. I know in Sutton, for example, the Housing Authority contacted us and asked us if we would be interested in giving them a proposal, because they have a very high electric rate. So that opportunity could be available.
Mr. Chairman, if the, if the Board doesn't have any other questions, if I could ask you to take these three articles one at a time and vote? And again, what you'd be voting on is opening the warrant to include each one?
Yep. All right, so, most want to open a warrant?
To open a warrant, to include Article 7, relocation of M SBA funds to new capital already.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to open a warrant to include Article 13, personal bylaw amendments, classification and compensation parent.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to include, open a warrant to include Article 16, zoning bylaw amendments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I would need a motion to close the law.
Make a motion to close the law?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, next, the FY16 budget update.
I'm not sure if the Chairman of the Finance Committee wishes to speak, but I do want to let you know that you should have in front of you a memorandum dated April 7th. Given the current budget deficit, I asked Marilyn Matthew to take a review of the assessors' overlay accounts.
Okay.
And let me know if there were any excess funds that we could use to fund the budget. So those numbers are in front of you.
Okay.
After further discussion with the Finance Committee, based on the items where we're looking to fund and anticipate in the future, things that may be coming up after the town meeting, such as the potential for additional students to Norfolk Aggie at $22,000 each, things like that. The Finance Committee is recommending the release of the FY06 and the FY08. And just to point out, you don't see FY07, because we actually took that last year. So that's why it's not there. So the total is $22,330.50.
Motion to request the Board of Assessors to meet. I'm calling for...
Hmm?
My motion is, is to request the Board of Assessors to meet in a duly posted meeting and vote to certify the amounts of excess in the assessors' overlay account as provided by the town at times as follows. Fiscal year 2006, $643.28. And fiscal year 2008, $21,687.22. And further, vote to release from this surplus, a total of $22,330.50.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the, the update on the budget, the Finance Committee and I are off just slightly, and we'll determine where we're off tomorrow night, but not including the additional funding being requested from BMR, which is at $280,000. With that taken out of the picture, we're still at a $120,000 deficit. So we'd be looking at closer to a $400,000 if we, if we had that in. We do have free cash, and we'll have the assessors' overlay that we can use, but that's what we are looking to deal with tomorrow night. The only one outstanding item on the budget since I met with the Board that last Monday, I think I'd emailed you after the fact, asking if you wanted to revisit the Assistant Assessor Line item. I had some additional information for your review. Other than that, I think I'm all set with the Board. So it was just that one Assistant Assessor Line item.
Okay.
And if you're all set with that, then I have nothing else for the Board.
All right. That's good for me.
As far as the budget goes, the Superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent, last night met with the Blackstone Parents Group, and then came over to Millville Elementary for their Parents Group, and gave the presentation, short and formed, a little more casual, on their budget. You know, and they, they did talk about, you know, why they need it, the whole thing. And, you know, there were some thoughtful questions, but they also asked, you know, the parents, what do we need to do, you know? So I think they understand that there's, it's going to be a difficult year.
Yeah.
And it's going to be hard. But it did seem like, you know, he was looking forward to hearing back from the towns, to see, to meet, because their goal was to have, you know, when Millville votes, it, it doesn't have to go to the end of the year, like we did last year. And I said, that's not the goal of anybody, to do that. That's really not that fun for any of us.
Nope.
And so, and I, and I get that one of the problems is, is when that happens, they have to lay off staff, and then they lose some quality staff that they do have to other schools, because they don't know what to do. So we do meet first. Blackstone doesn't meet till June 2nd. So I think, you know, the sooner that conversation starts about where our deficits are, because the school's going to be hit, because it's, you know, it's not that conversation sooner than later. I told them that you present the Wednesday before, but that you meet every Wednesday, and that they should attend.
Yeah.
So I did, I did kind of put that out there. And they're like, well, when will it be done? And I was like...
Well, we're, we're very close, I mean, to a budget right now. And like Helen said, we're, we're pretty close with what the selectmen are looking at and what we're looking at. It's going to come down to how much we're able to provide the school.
Right.
We are balancing the budget with free cash, with everything else that we've got left over, beyond what the revenues are. So whatever we do give the school, it's really not sustainable into the outgoes. And I said that last year, and I'll say it again, again this year. The school presented a budget that, in their eyes, was a cut. They put a budget together and said, that's too high, so here's where we want to cut. And they showed it as, as cuts. And then they gave us the number, which was $280,000 higher than what we spent last year on it, including the $153,000, beyond that $153,000, the additional funds we put in for last year. They're asking for an additional $280,000. With our issues with insurance, Worcester County Retirement, the snow removal costs, we may be able to squeak out another year, but if we're going to do this continually, we'll present a balanced budget to you, but I don't think you're going to be able to operate the town with that balanced budget. You're going to have to ask the taxpayers for an override, if those school budgets continue to rise, if the insurance costs continue to go up, and these snow removal costs aren't run into control, all of these pieces. So that's, that's where we're at right now.
Rich, my understanding was, and you could tell me where, where we stand with this, because I hear it from Joe, and I hear it from other people too, that the school head count is lower, but yet our cost keeps on rising.
Well, the school's head count is going down, which is working against us in the Chapter 70 funding in the formula. We get less money.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, is the school Superintendent and all the rest of those people over there looking at, okay, they gotta, they gotta start being a little bit more creative like this town did. I mean, we're bare bones, and the thing is, they still want to leave schools open, and they, they need to fill their classes more and, and consolidate in order, to save money. And they're not willing to do any of that. I mean...
I'm, I'm not sure. I think he's hoping at everything, but I think they're trying to get, you know, they presented a 1.7%, you know, it's, it's called a smoothing curve.
Right.
If they gotten that over the course of many years, they'd be in good shape. But right now, there's a spike to get up to where they, they should have been in about one year. And that's where this big jump is coming. And what I'm saying is that if we're, if, if we have to pay that amount of money, if that's what Blackstone's going to agree to, I don't think for us, with the income that we have right now, is going to be sustainable in the outgoes without us doing something to increase revenue, basically, in overall.
The, the school did have, last fall, an outreach to parents, students, teachers, residents, to talk about the regionalizing of the schools through K through 12. So that Millville Elementary might be housing, you know, your preschool, K first, second graders, and maybe your Blackstone complexes housing another grade level. So you bring in all the kids as one. So that was always, it was a conversation. Last, was it two days ago, it came out on their, their page, and then today, in the children's backpacks came home, the letter that they're looking for, four separate committees, I think it was four, to look at revamping to, and one is cost effectiveness, one is transportation, one is class size, one is, you know, so they're breaking it down. And I always like, I'm, I'm not a great, big fan of the, the proposal in general. I don't have a lot of information, but it's just kind of one of those things. But the letter came home, which I thought was a feasibility study, but basically said, we will be presenting this at town meeting. Based on the timeframe that was in the letter, it looks like they want to present it maybe next year at town meeting, because it starts in April, and they expect to present it to school committee, I think, June or August, July, August, one of their summer meetings, that they are going to present what they find, and how can we make this work, and where is it, because, you know, the cost savings is going to be, and the efficiency of your music teacher not traveling, and all those other things. So they, it looks as if they want to be presenting that as a possibility for next year. And they have said right along that it would be a cost-effective way. We'll see when they actually do the study and see the research and see how it all works out. But they are, they are full swing with that. So...
We'll see. We'll see.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure.
It still has to be voted on at town meeting, three-year agreement, and that changes.
Apparently, there's, from what I've been told, is quite a good surplus space to Millville Elementary School right now. And so things are out of bounds. There's a lot of surplus.
There wouldn't be any surplus space if we didn't build a middle school.
Right.
All right? We built a very big middle school for, for what they said was coming, which never came. Millville is the perfect size for what it was built for. And actually, the back wing has an additional plan. The architect plans are still there, in case we needed an additional four classrooms. So off the back, there would have been another wing, if need be. So our building is appropriate for what we needed. So if we brought back our fifth graders, we would be, we would be fine. The district has a middle school, and I understand the concept, I understand the educational piece of it, but the surplus is a district-wide thing, so they shouldn't say Millville has surplus. We'd have plenty if it wasn't the middle school.
JFK and Av Maloney have surplus rooms, too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because you've got how many rooms up at the, you know what I mean, the middle school?
Right.
Both towns voted to build a middle school.
Right.
Right, because they, they were projecting an increase in students, and instead we have a major decrease going on. And only because, main reason is that the general public is getting older.
The, the other thing that jumped in this year's budget is debt at the schools. The roofs, it, all three roofs, two roofs.
Two for us.
Two for us, yeah.
Yeah.
Have come due. So that doubled our debt.
Yeah.
Now, the school is talking about a capital project to renovate the high school as well, which is probably going to come down within the next two years. So that's going to be another project that we're going to have to look at to fund, which will increase the, the costs. Now, both of those have debt exclusion, voted against them right now. This next one, I think, is going to be pretty high. Hopefully, they'll wait until the middle school is paid for, because there's not much debt left on that one, I'm told. They don't have that number in front of them, but...
Yeah, the middle school should be almost done, I think, huh?
Um...
It's pretty close.
Yeah, I don't know what year it was. I can't remember, was it 90s?
Oh, it's 80s.
It was 2003?
There's like two years left, maybe?
I left in 2001, maybe? I can't remember.
Well, I was in 200. I mean...
The middle school for us is $66,350 left on it. Um, the middle school for us is sixty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars left on it.
Okay.
Hundred and sixty-four thousand to the Blackstone.
Not much, though.
There's a sewer bond for us of forty-one thousand dollars. Our total debt this year is, uh, is two hundred and seventeen thousand. From, well, from a hundred and twenty thousand from last year. So that's almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars higher, uh, a hundred thousand dollars higher. Yeah, close enough. So, you know, add all those together.
Yeah.
You know, insurance, debt, increased school budgets. I mean, it's not just the school, it's, it's causing our, our numbers to fluctuate, it's a combination of things.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Rich.
Yeah, it's always great to see you, Rich.
We gotta win the silver.
Well, the number is down. That's a good thing.
Can we put money in the budget to purchase scratch tickets every week? Maybe we can win that way. Oh, God.
Okay.
Well. Okay, well.
The, uh, did you finish new business, you closing?
Hmm, well, we're still sorta talking about the budget.
Yeah. I've got something to, to bring up. It is new old business, and, and that is, uh, right here, I've got a pile of, uh, contracts assigned. I think I emailed the chairman.
Yep.
Um, what I'd, what I'd be asking to do tonight is, is ask the board to allow, to have me sign on behalf of the town, uh, these contracts. And basically.
It's for the green.
What, what are these contracts? So everybody vote.
The, the lighting project, first off, uh, where the rubber meets the road is, well, actually with the, uh, hybrid cruiser.
Okay.
Next phase is six LED lighting projects, starting with the elementary school and municipal buildings. Those, those projects in total, uh, are approximately thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
And that was that mu- that money right there?
That's like money right there.
That, that we, it's the grant that we got, so.
Grant money.
Yeah, it's not.
It's grant money.
So it's money that we're not.
And basically, with the elementary school alone, uh, on, on the survey that is done, I'm gonna say thirty-five hundred dollars a year, just on, on that one facility. And that really doesn't come out of our pockets, the town, the town of revenue. Um, so, um.
How many contracts you have there, Joe?
I have sixteen total.
They have the sign?
Well, right now, in this phase, there are just six lighting projects. Okay, you know, uh, library.
All right.
Uh, the flash station, senior center, and this area here.
That's what you were asking for, for tonight?
Yeah.
Just the vote to allow him to, to make him obviously have Joe sign.
Before, before I, before I finish that, there, there are a couple of caveats here in terms of, uh, one of them is the financing. In other words, you gotta finish the product, project and have it signed off, uh, before you get your grant money.
Okay.
So there, there is, in speaking with, with Marilyn, there is, uh, enough cash flow, and this is a relatively small amount, that if we, uh, time it properly, you know, there are no issues with this. So basically, what we, you know, what's critical is the scheduling of these projects. So that when, um, the way, the way the, the, the grant works is, you know, you, you gotta go ahead and do the project, get it, you know, pay the contractor, and when that's all done, you get your grant money. So as long as, uh, we don't get invoiced in this first round bef- uh, before June thirtieth, we'll be okay. Cause the state sometimes can take two months to.
Right.
Well, does the contractors have that understanding?
Well, the, the con- the contractors, uh, have that understanding. Plus, some of their money is coming from the incentives, from the utility.
Right.
Well, they have an understanding and they're not barking at our door. I don't see what the problem is.
So we, we had that issue. The other issue is, it's a small one. Uh, when they do the work at the elementary school, we, we need to put in, uh, or have a dumpster there so they can dispose it. And the other thing is storage for the, the new construction material. Uh, we need a place in, uh, Helen indicated that we might have room in those trailers to, to put whatever, storage, you know, make the storage we need in those trailers.
Would they be doing the elementary school when the kids get out?
Uh, well, uh, it's, it's in, in the parking lot, it's exterior. And it should be, maybe they could do a weekend, so that kinda thing.
Yeah. The only reason I say is because with the school, the, the roof project went so late that the, the kids weren't like allowed out into that area.
Yeah.
Um, it, it created a parking problem, um, at one point, or a driving around problem. The chief went up and took care of that. Um, and then with the winter, the kids have been inside. So you put exterior things, then they're gonna block off that whole area. They're not gonna let the kids within five feet of it, you know what I'm saying? So I don't know if that's something like you, you know, can be done on the weekend, can be done after they get out in June, can it be done, April vacation's too close, but do you know what I mean, if they can be worked with?
We'll schedule it at the convenience of the school.
But I mean, check with her, yeah.
The, uh, the other thing is that there'll be a weatherization project on, on the building's interior.
Mm-hmm.
And those will be scheduled for the summer months when the school is out.
Yeah. Cause I know with the mason work, the fire alarm went off quite often. And the kids were, you know, interrupted. It wasn't once, do you know what I mean? It was, it was quite a few times, so I think the less, um, intrusion upon them, I think we've, I think we've kinda worn out our welcome on, after that roof and mason work.
So it, it, at this point, if it's okay with the board, uh, we're welcome on motion to sign these contracts. Uh, my, my plan would be to get together with Matt immediately to work out his schedule. Matt is the, the project coordinator with Guardian Energy. And, uh, hit the show on the road and, um, we should see some substantial savings in our electric bills, for this part and oil consumption. I wish this building were, we could do something here, but the, the condition it's in, it's not much we can do.
Nope. Now, you don't wanna invest too much in lighting, I find out.
It's not only lighting, it's in, well.
Insulation and.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I'll second John's motion that was made.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right, next, members' forum.
Members' forum, can I speak again?
No.
Well, wait a minute.
Yeah, all right, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just thinking, we, this board collectively, now that, we've, we've got a whole year ahead of us, um, a new year coming, uh, we should have, I'm, I'm promoting a workshop right now. Uh, we need to come up with a goal or, you know, we have our mission statement, we have mission vision and all that. But we need to come up with a goal and work on it collectively as a town. It could be, you know, with the school or those five points that I, I thought of. Maybe, you know, some input here, but a little workshop in, with the mission and going away with a goal for the town.
All right. When, when we wanna do that?
Um, do you wanna, um, on May eighteenth at six, is CMRPC gonna take up that full hour, do you think?
Hmm, depends who's speaking. Some of the people from there are pretty long-winded and some of them, yeah, get right to the point.
Well, maybe what you wanna do is put a timely strength on, on somebody, you know, just say.
Right, but we invited CMRPC for six o'clock, but giving them till seven. And if they take the whole hour, they take the whole hour, you know?
I mean, but if they have a whole bunch of people, you don't wanna go over.
Um, you could do Monday, May fourth, before your seven.
We could do that. We could do that. Cause if, if Megan comes from CMRPC, we're gonna use the whole hour. I'll guarantee that.
How about May fourth?
May fourth at what time?
We only need fifteen minutes.
Six-thirty?
That's all I had.
I'd like to ask the board a question.
Yep.
That guy with all these, uh, junk cars, it seemed to getting more and more. It's building up. I mean, he's getting to the point where he's running out of room.
You mean March?
Yeah.
Wow.
I mean, what's going on with that? I mean, it's just like, what is it?
The building commissioner did, um, issue a cease and desist. I'd have to follow up with Mr. Sheehan tomorrow night and see where that is.
My question is, is the police have any say over this about unregistered motor vehicles? Have they been checked to make sure they're not stolen or they're on the up and up? I mean...
He's gonna be invited by somebody on the property.
Correct. Is that how that works?
Yep.
It's my understanding that most of them are registered. I don't have the authority to.
I'm just asking. Uh, you know, people are asking me, I said, I don't have the answer, I have to ask.
They've been there a very long time, with most of the cars.
Well, he's got a couple of new cars there now. Now he's got a couple of pickup trucks now, it keeps him growing.
The building commissioner has to stop the investigation and then, then decide whether it's time to call in the police.
As Helen, is there any feedback from him at all? Did you ask him? Can you ask him where he stands?
I will check with him tomorrow night where the sta- I, I know he did copy us on a cease and desist order.
Yep.
So I'll, I'll see what the next step is.
Cause now, just an example, like, uh, Zeno's is a repair shop. And we gave, he has, but he's, I forget the amount of vehicles that we told him he's allowed to have on property. But, you know, but his are all registered and being repaired.
Right.
And they're not his. They're customers' vehicles. Um, and I know March isn't, um, practicing the same.
No.
And I don't mean to compare one business to the other. I was just using that as a closest example, so.
That was my question.
All right.
It's all I got.
All right. Uh, next is final public forum. Oh, never mind, that's canceled for tonight.
I'll be quick. Are you gonna give it a little time, we speak?
Yeah, you got a time limit, thirty seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry, guys. Some good news for you, too, I sent it to Helen today. Received a letter this morning from Governor Baker.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the Millville Police Department, uh, did receive a new application grant, uh, from the Burn Memorial Justice Committee of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars.
Good.
It was a grant that Trish and I worked on, very competitive grant, offered by the federal government and administered by the state. So we are one of a few departments to receive, uh, this particular grant. So it's for twenty-six thousand dollars. We're gonna be purchasing a, a new fingerprint machine. So the old ink and wheel is no longer being, could be used. So we're gonna state of the art, um, which I think the FBI is gonna mandate down the road anyway. So when we wrote this grant, we really decided to go for that piece of equipment. So in the future, when you come in for fingerprints and LTC, job application, no more ink. To simply place your hand on the scanner and that's it. So the cost of that is like twenty-seven thousand dollars. So it's free from, uh, Governor Baker through our, uh, award, from our grant, so it's just good information.
Good.
Maybe you can try to find out how to get into the Department of Education's racket that they've got going?
They have, yep.
Because they're doing, cause they go to Milford.
Yep.
You have to go to Milford or Worcester to get fingerprinted.
Right.
It's fifty bucks.
Right, what we're going to do, I'm glad you mentioned that.
But I don't know if that's something, I mean, if you've got that machine, is that something that we could?
I'm glad you mentioned that, because I did speak to Marilyn today. And she's going to establish an, an account at the next, um, town meeting, the next one in the fall, uh, some type of revolving account. So any money generated from the use of the machine will go into this particular account, as she was telling me today, to offset the expenses of the machine, if we have any. So yes, we'll charge maybe ten dollars for fingerprinting. People who need a background check for a daycare, uh, employment checks, so we'll be able to charge for that. So now, you know, now we use the ink, it's very messy. Uh, a lot of the prints are rejected by the FBI or the state. Cause you really have to, it's a lot to take a real good fingerprint. A lot of guys simply can't do it. And some people are very difficult to fingerprint because of their hands. So with this new state of the art machine, all you do is apply pressure onto the, um, scanner. And it really documents all your fingerprints. So it's gonna be a great, uh, very surprised we got it, to be frank with you. I didn't think we had a shot.
Great tool.
But it is a great tool. Like I said, I think, um, down the road, it's gonna be mandated anyway.
Yep.
So we beat the curve, we get the grant for it, so we're good. So that's good news and I'm all done.
Excellent, GP.
Wow.
Thank you very much.
What about the iris scanner? That's next.
That's the next grant.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna, uh, grab this warrant.
Okay. We can start signing those, those there while she's getting the warrants.
Where do you know was, uh, the switch? What's your excuse now?
It's, it's on my workbench in the garage.
That's a good place for it.
In the UPS box.
That's a good place for it.
Came in, uh, right.
Uh, we've got three warrants this evening. The first is the payroll for the pay period ending April fourth, in the amount of thirty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. The vendor warrant stated April sixth, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty cents. And the payroll deductions for the pay period March twenty-third, in the amount of four thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Which one's that?
Yeah.
Thanks, Helen.
Okay. There are motion to accept. The warrant is read.
Motion, go ahead, John. I have the motion to accept the warrants is read.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Joe. One, come on, get going.
Whatever, man, I had three and one.
Go on, honey.
One thing here.
What'd you do, chop the tree down?
Oh, that was from Lisa.
Oh, Lisa, take it easy on the tree. Your daughter, what, Scott? Tom?
Hmm?
Is this for the experience door?
Is it still what?
My daughter.
No, she has two more.
She has two more? I don't know, she was, I, I thought she was right behind Shannon, but same as Shannon.
Nope.
Roland Stoughton, twenty-six, and that's in September. Well, the mechanical engineer. Kind of part-time, full-time. He's just gonna work at Waters full-time.
Nice, good.
And then they have a good reimbursement.
Nice.
Well, you know what? It's got to start, it's well worth it.
Yeah, so it'll take a little years.
Yeah.
Wander to get his degree back. But he doesn't wanna be an engineer right now. He wants, he still likes working on the machines.
Yes. Yeah.
But at least he'll have it in his pocket.
Yep.
And he's old. And I'm gonna talk to Jerry Finn, too. Those long letters that he makes me read.
He, he knows.
I don't like reading them.
That we should charge BBT for advertising.
Yeah. No kidding.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
No, no, yeah, yeah. I just wanna ask a question. And that is, just a point of information. I'm gonna be going around town next week looking at John's, that packet that John has, or communicate some possible solar development sites on town-owned property.
Yep.
So I'll be going around town.
Okay.
With, with a consultant to see, you know, the prospects of regaining water.
Okay.
John thinks they're ugly, but if...
Well...
Oh, yeah, they are. They are ugly.
Solar's kinda ugly to look at, but a windmill is ugly to look at and noisy.
Very noisy, so I would stay away from, I'm totally against the windmill.
Well, they're not, they're not paying back like solar is anyway.
Because men didn't want to do that right near my house.
Anyway.
Motion, Richard.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Better not hear a nay on that.